Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for August 14, 2023, and call upon Councilmember Randy Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you please all join me in a moment of silence? And now join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Faray. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Ms. Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Faray from tonight's business meeting.
Motion to excuse. All votes are cast. Mr. Jones, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
The majority of council has voted yes as well. For those who don't know, Ms. Faray gave birth to a bouncing baby girl on the, was it the 12th? Friday. Friday. So mom and baby are doing well, but this is a baby with a very healthy head of hair. She's posted some pictures on Facebook and others, and glad mom and child are doing great. And I was trying to think back. I can't think of any time where we've had a mom on council give birth during her time in office. So it's sort of a monumentous We are now moving on to public comment. I've got some individuals that have signed up for public comment, not on our public hearing issue tonight. The first is Frank Freeman. Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Yes, come to the podium. I've got your address. So public comment is limited to three minutes. The purpose of public comment is to give us your input. It's not an opportunity for a debate. It's just to hear what you have to say. We'll pay close attention to what you have to say, and if there's something that calls for further attention down the road, we'll certainly keep you posted.
Okay. First, Mayor Williams and all the council members, thank you for hearing me out. I sent an email to all of you last week. Did you get that email regarding the George Myers pool?
Did, sir.
Okay. Just very briefly, I was a frustrated kid. I wanted to accelerate through high school and college, very determined, and George Myers was more of a prison warden than he was an educator. We made a deal with my father, him, and two counselors there. We shook hands, and he gave his word that I could accelerate and pass each test with 100% score, move on to the next subject, studying on my own. I handed in the algebra test with 100%. He refused to give me credit. We got in a very heated argument, and he lied. You know, he just lied to me, and he had my future in his hands. He told me after a long argument, he said, "You're just a smart ass. If you want to argue anymore, get a lawyer." I said to him, "And you're a lying SOB," except I didn't say SOB. He grabbed me out of the chair, and I can take you right over here and show you where it happened. There's a cinder block wall right here. He grabbed me out of the chair and bashed me against that wall. It split the back of my head open. I had blood running down the back of my neck. I didn't know what he was going to do next, and it happened very fast. It almost knocked me out. I punched him. It was self-defense. It was clearly self-defense. If that had been on video, the man would have gone to jail. At the class reunions, he's the talk of the evening. Several girls said that if a girl got in trouble with grades or behavior, they could get off the hook by having sex with George Myers. Some girls, one girl was choking up in tears, and she said that she definitely knew that this happened. She didn't confess that it happened to her, but it was obvious. Some of these girls were as young as 16 years old. It really irks me. That was in 1970. I ended up with a degree in aerospace science and was retired as a Boeing 777 captain, so I made a good citizen of myself. I just want to read something very quickly, just to summarize. That pool, it's a disgrace to have his name on that pool, and especially when I drive by there and I realize I'm helping to pay for that thing, and so are a lot of young girl victims at the time. It's just immoral. Here's my suggestion, and I think you've read it, but the Beasley-Vaykov, remember Officers Beasley and Waykov, we all do. Beasley-Vaykov Recreation Center is dedicated to officers Gordon Beasley and Dylan Waykov, who courageously lost their lives in the line of duty, as well as to all police and firefighters, who unselfishly placed themselves in harm's way on a daily basis to protect the lives of others in this community. I don't care what you think about George Myers. His tenure as a vice principal, even if he were an honorable man, could not be anywhere nearly as noble as Officers Beasley and Waykov, losing their lives in service to our community, as well as the police and firefighters.
Thank you for your-
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I will indicate that there's not going to be a decision made anytime soon on this. There'll be lots of opportunity for public input. You know, we were having a little discussion among council members that it's almost dangerous to name any building after an individual. There was a former Arapahoe County sheriff who ended up being sent to the jail that his name was on. So it can be interesting things. So thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Julie Hogan. I'm an Arvada resident, have been for about 14 years with my family. I'm here as a concerned resident and as the elected officials, our city staff, city attorneys, anyone here that can help to review carefully a development project that's going to affect us for decades. Now, it will have a huge impact on our safety, health, and quality of life, and to be clear, this project is on the border with Arvada in unincorporated Jefferson County. But it is in the urban growth and comprehensive master plan for Arvada. And I'm talking about 5950 McIntyre Street, a proposed very large logistics distribution warehouse project at 60th and McIntyre, and one that all Arvada residents should be aware of and a bit concerned about. It sits on 40 acres of historically contaminated brownfield land, mostly vacant for decades. So this development will become a distribution warehouse, three of them, with more than 1,000 delivery trucks a day, 24-hour operations for many of the tenants, although we don't know the tenants as yet, have not been disclosed. And with such operations on an infill site, to make matters worse, it is adjacent to and next to hundreds and hundreds of homes. Many of these, 300 of these, within 500 feet, and nowhere else in the country most likely that has revised land development codes would allow this type of development so close to homes. How can this happen? Well, for starters, Jefferson County has very outdated land use and zoning regulations. They haven't been, these type, especially the industrial, Section 27 regulations, haven't been updated for decades. The landowner, excuse me, the landowner is Carlson Land Associates, and they're selling their 40 assembled acres to Constellation Real Estate Partners based in Dallas and Houston. We are not opposed to development on this site. We all expected this site to one day be developed. This is certainly not the kind of development homeowners expected or wanted to see. So there is no regard for the 2012 Jefferson County Comprehensive Master Plan by the developer or the landowner, because it clearly states on this type of infill site, this is not a compatible development. We need Arvada to use the influence and the opportunity on things that must be approved by Arvada for Jefferson County, and that means setbacks, water, stormwater, drainage, easements, anything that can help this development have a better outcome. And we have a town hall meeting August 22 at Storyline Church at 6:30. Anyone interested in more information, please come.
Thank you, ma'am. Lynn Clemmons.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Lynn Clemmons. I'm the president of the Westwood Villas HOA, and my property is directly north of the property that Julie just spoke of, and she's a hard act to follow. Thank you for the, I want to thank the Arvada for the webpage that addresses the West 63rd Avenue and McIntyre Street, which is exactly the intersection where my complex is. The homeowners in the area are hoping that the city can stand by the decision that it looks like on the webpage against a write-in and write-out only turn. That would be disastrous for all of us. My concern is for the pedestrian light that I'm, that it looks like the Arvada is considering. I'm hoping the seniors who will be moving in on the west side of McIntyre in a big 119-room senior residence are not counting on having an easy time crossing McIntyre. The traffic comes down the hill approaching this intersection at a pretty high speed. The city has kept the 35 miles per hour speed limit, but few vehicles abide by this. My concern is that a pedestrian light will provide a false sense of security for anyone, especially seniors, trying to cross at this intersection. There have been comments about the similar light that is in place going north on Ward from 64th to 72nd. Vehicles coming down that hill just have a hard time stopping for pedestrians. Vehicles going north on McIntyre have a similar dilemma, but with a hill and now at a blind curve. There's only 360 feet from the blind curve to the West 63rd Avenue intersection. Going 45 miles an hour at a 6% grade because it is going downhill, the stopping distance is 400 feet for a car. What will this be for a fully loaded semi, and how much, how much will the community be impacted by the noise of the brakes of the trucks? Arvada has already put up noise-ordinance signs along McIntyre, and I thank you for this. The reality is, a warehouse development with 500,000 square feet of warehouse space, 40-foot-high buildings, 144 truck bays, and almost 700 car parking spaces will generate many, many trips down our McIntyre. As stated in a minor traffic analysis submitted by the developers, 45% of the trips will go north on McIntyre, past my intersection and onto 64th and McIntyre, and then east, west, and north into Arvada. I'm asking Arvada to consider asking the Jeffco for, I'm asking Arvada to consider a full traffic signal first at West 63rd Avenue, and then I'm asking that the city ask Jeffco for, to recommend a major traffic analysis, because clearly this is going to be more than the 944 trips that the developer has predicted, and I really think a major traffic analysis would be in order. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anybody else who wishes to address City Council on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close. And we do not have anybody on Zoom. Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion for issues not scheduled on the agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. The first is R23074, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Jacobs Engineering Group for engineering services related to the water treatment plant replacement, piloting, and process selection in an amount not to exceed approximately $553,000. The second one is R23075, which is a resolution authorizing a participating addendum by and between the City of Arvada and Motorola Solutions for the purchase of public safety radios and services in an amount not to exceed $2.4 million. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items R23-074 and R23-075 both be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Jones, how do you vote? You are joined by the rest of council. That passes six to zero with Ms. Faray being in excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, R23076, which is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement titled Program-Funded State and Local Task Force Agreement between the City of Arvada and the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration. And Aaron Jacks, you're going to give us some information on this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Arvada Police Department partners with the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, the DEA, to address drug trafficking and related crimes that impact our community. We currently assign one investigator full-time to DEA Enforcement Group Number One out of the Denver Field Office. As you might imagine, drug trafficking investigations are highly complex, very time-consuming, and those investigators regularly accrue overtime pay as a result. This intergovernmental agreement provides that the DEA will reimburse the city for overtime accrued by our investigator assigned to Task Force One, subject to certain terms and an annual cap through September of 2026. This is an IGA that must be approved by council because it's between, obviously, the Arvada Police Department as a department of the city and the DEA as a unit of the United States Government. It is appropriate for adoption by resolution because it does not meet any of the requirements that would require an ordinance. The Arvada team recommends that the council improve Resolution R23076, Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement titled Program-Funded State and Local Task Force Agreement between the city and the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration.
Thank you. City Council questions or actions? Ms. Simpson, you're first.
I'll reserve the motion.
You may proceed.
All right. Perfect. And real quick, Mr. Jacks, I do have a quick question. You mentioned that it results in significant overtime. Approximately how much is that? Do we know?
Ms. Simpson, off the top of my head, I do not know. I just know from experience that these investigations take investigators to various locations across the state at all times of the day and night. My experience has been that DEA investigations are probably some of the most complex work that our agency helps with, and there are overtime costs regularly.
Okay. Perfect. Well, good work on creating the IGA, and I'm happy to make the motion. I move that R23-076, A Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement Titled Program-Funded State and Local Task Force Agreement between City of Arvada and the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. Mr. Jones, how do you vote? And I just canceled everybody else out. Sorry. You'd think after 12 years I know how to do this. And the rest of council joins in that, so that passes six to zero with Ms. Faray being in excused absence. Thank you. We are now moving on to our public hearings. I will open the public hearing on Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Planned Unit Development, PUD, generally located north of Candela's Parkway and McIntyre Street, bounded by West 93rd Place and Kilmer Way in the City of Arvada, Colorado. Also at the same time, we'll consider Candela's filing number one, Amendment Number Four, Major Subdivision Preliminary Platte, generally located north of Candela's Parkway and McIntyre Street, bounded by West 93rd Place and Kilmer Way in the City of Arvada, Colorado. And Rob Spatano is going to give us the presentations on this from the city perspective.
Thank you. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting PUD Development Plan and Preliminary Platte Approval to allow for a development of a mixed-use project consisting of 39 townhomes, 33 multifamily units, and approximately 10,000 square feet of retail space. The townhomes will all be two stories in height, while the mixed-use buildings will be three stories in height. The property is bisected by McIntyre Street, which will be redesigned with on-street parking and traffic calming measures. Access to the site is provided from three locations along 93rd Place and one location on Kilmer Way. Since the last time the council saw this application in June of 2022, the number of townhomes has been reduced, the building heights have been reduced, the amount of parking has been increased, the amount of retail has also been increased, among other changes that are outlined in the staff report, and I'm sure will also be part of the applicant's presentation. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the PUD Development Plan and the Preliminary Platte at their April 18 meeting. We have received a signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions, and we also have several planning and engineering staff members to answer any questions as well.
Very good. I'll ask anyone who's going to testify on this matter to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Before we get started, and before I turn it over to the applicant for their presentation, we will have, I've got some people who have signed up for public comment, or maybe more. Again, the three-minute limit will be applied as to those presentations. The applicant can make a presentation as long as they want. I would recommend not going like three or four hours, but can make their presentation, at which point I will open it up for public comment, either for or against. Please direct all public comment to the diocese, to City Council. You know, we've all been in, or we've seen on TV, and I think we've done a great job in Arvada, that every once in a while you'll see public hearings where somebody turns towards either the proponent or the opponent and point fingers at them and tell them they're everything but a good person. That doesn't happen in Arvada. I'm so proud of the citizens of Arvada because we do respect each other. Our public hearings, I think, are among the best, and if not just the state, I think, in the nation in terms of how our citizens conduct themselves. We will listen attentively to the applicant, to anyone who's opposed to this, and then after the individuals who speak in opposition, the applicant, because they have the burden of proof, will be able to make a rebuttal or clear up things, at which point City Council, I'll open it up to City Council questions of either applicants or other individuals, and we'll go through that process, and then we'll ultimately come down to voting a decision on this. I know that many of us, probably all of us on City Council, have received emails. There was a petition. Understand that this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and as such, even though we've reviewed what you have presented to us, we have to take that in light of what we're hearing tonight and consider what's being said on the record. So, and we'll make, I assume we've made the emails part of the record? Is that, yes, Kristen Rush has confirmed that all emails are part of the record as well, so that we have a good record, and we'll certainly endeavor to enter an appropriate decision tonight. So with that, if the applicant would like to make the presentation.
Terrific. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Marcus Pockner. My address is 1480 Humboldt Street, Denver, Colorado. I am a land use and community outreach consultant for this team. We will have mayor three speakers tonight in our, in our presentation. We will try to judiciously move through the presentation. I certainly want to note, congratulations to the counselor and to all of you on the new addition. We are here tonight to talk about Candela's filing number four, as was outlined by staff. We are here tonight to present the preliminary platte and the preliminary development plan. It's great to be back in front of you all. Just want to introduce our team. Our full team is here tonight to answer any questions that you have or provide any questions, if there are, for the rebuttal. We are led by TriPoint Homes. They are the applicant on the site. Norris Design is the planner on the site. My company, the Pockner Company Community Outreach. Our engineers are here. Martin and Martin and Kim Lee Horn, which is specifically on traffic and pedestrian improvements, and then our architect is Goden Suik. I will now have Dan Glasso just briefly tell about TriPoint Homes and a little bit about his involvement in this project. Dan.
Dan Glasso, 5350 South Roslin Street, number 400, Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80016, with TriPoint Homes, obviously. We've, TriPoint has been in City of Arvada for almost their entire existence in Colorado. We started in Leiden Rock back in 2015, and we've built in Candela's. We've built three different series in Candela's, and we are currently building our fourth series, which is, are these townhomes on a different parcel that was previously approved. We're a nationwide company. We're in 10 states and District of Columbia, and we've worked really hard to make sure that our homeowners are first. We are also recently a 100-place greatest places to work company, or 100 best places to work, and that's just kind of a, one of our culture things that I think shines through. And also, we're very big on environmental and social governments. As Marcus said, we're really excited tonight to show you all the changes that we've made since we were last here. We took the suggestions that were made in council here and tried to push all that forward. I think it's been, you may have seen the plan before that allowed us to come back early, and so with that, I'm ready to turn it over, and Marcus and Bonnie will kind of go through the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Just a little slide. This is some of the product that Dan was describing, other neighborhoods within the Arvada community. For context, ladies and gentlemen, just to reintroduce ourselves to the site, the context, it's always important to look at this site. It's interesting to see it, and before Candela's was built out, you think about this entryway off of McIntyre coming in. You can see it framed as this community started to merge. Now, a fully built-out community with neighborhoods that access this point every day, and certainly one of the great opportunities of this site is that neighbors know it so well. Everybody thinks about this site, and we have been able to receive terrific feedback about how to provide that mixed-use community that was envisioned for this site. The next slide actually shows it in context of the preliminary development plan and the platte, so you see it as a gateway, a true gateway and entrance that should be the mixed-use center, that gathering point for the community. You see the lots, the parks, the open space, the neighborhood that has really emerged, this great neighborhood, and how important this site is in to provide different services and different types of homes on this site. For just a brief history on this site, we actually started in 2020. We have been working for three-plus years on this to really perfect. What we focus on is something called inclusive planning. So I won't go through all of these details, but I'll fast-forward a little bit. In bold, in 2020, this plan was brought as a completely residential plan. It was 57 townhomes. It was brought, and City Council correctly and aptly said, "We want to see what was in the original plan, what neighbors wanted to see when they purchased their homes." They wanted to see a town center, that gathering place, a mixed-use center, that really provided that place where we could all walk to, bike to, or drive to on the way home. We did go about that process and started changing that. 2021 was a different time, right? It was COVID. It seems like it was many, many years ago, but we went through an intensive community engagement, one-on-one. We actually planned temporary uses because we didn't know when retail would come back. We really went into great detail on the plan. In 2022, we think we really made it great strides in providing that mixed-use community. We presented again to the Planning Commission. It was approved, and then City Council said, "We need some additional changes." We think it's very close, but there's a few things that we would like to see changed. Those four or five things, I'm going to actually cover them in detail, what we heard, what we heard from the community, some of the community members and from council, and how we have addressed them. Again, we look at opportunities and challenges. We see that planning challenge, and we have an opportunity to solve it. In 2023 here, we engaged in that. City Council approved the substantial change application last September. We had community meetings in November of last year, went to Planning Commission in April. This plan was approved seven to nothing, unanimous approval, and then we asked you respectfully in July for a postponement. We wanted to have one additional meeting just because of the passage of time. What had happened here, we thought it was appropriate. Since those last large community meetings were in November, we went back in August. You'll see some of those neighbors. There are new neighbors that move into this community all the time, but we think it is absolutely of vital importance to continue to engage with the neighbors. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a summary, and Bonnie, our planner, will walk through the plan in view and talk about these changes. But these are the five primary concerns that we heard from City Council. Again, those opportunities, and then our solutions. It's unfortunate to have to kind of read through slides, but these are really important, particularly the first. The first issue generally that drives everything was housing density and height concerns. Here's what we've done. We removed three townhomes. We increased the parking, 10 parking spaces overall. We have a larger buffer on the western side, the three neighbors that abut the site. We have reduced specifically the height of the townhomes to 25 feet and the mixed-use building to 40 feet. We have also increased the ground floor retail. It was very important to have more retail. That was specific feedback, and we have increased that use for retail. The parking, we wanted to be sure that there was enough specifically guest parking. We've increased those by another 12 spaces. We've added EV charging stations. 12 spaces. We've added EV charging stations and substantial bike parking. We do believe neighbors will walk and bike here. We think it's a very important aspect. Probably most importantly, the public safety concerns. We'll have a very detailed slide of all the improvements that we have made, but we understand what we must do here. We honestly have to change habits. How we entered the site today, it has been vacant, so people speed by this site today. There is nothing there. There is no friction at the road, so people move as quickly as they can through this, and we have to change those habits. So you will help people react to that change in condition, but we believe and we have studied to add very important public safety improvements. There were some operational concerns. We have addressed the trash and snow storage specifically. We have added those internal to our site. We actually work with the waste removal companies and snow storage there as well. So those five items are very specific of how we've approached this, and we'll now show them in plan view. Bonnie Nizelik, our principal planner from the beginning. She'll now walk through in detail the overall plan, but here you see the 39 townhomes, the 33 multifamily units that are above the two buildings on McIntyre Street, the density you see, and the open space calculations as well. Bonnie?
Thank you, Marcus. Thank you, Mayor, city council, and of course, staff. We're excited to be back in front of you. I don't know what we'll do next summer without seeing you all, hopefully. Wanted to, oh, sorry, Bonnie Nizelik, Norris Design, 1101 Bannick Street. So wanted to walk through some of the details of what Marcus just described on the changes made since last summer. So the first item, number one, which is located in the northwest corner, kind of the middle of the drawing, and the northeast end, we've removed a total of three townhomes to help with that residential density concern. As Marcus mentioned, we reduced the building heights on both the townhomes and mixed-use buildings. Number three is the safety improvements. We have a slide going through those details. The increase in commercial, we added 2,400 square feet to those two mixed-use buildings, the 10 additional parking spaces, the additional 20 bike parking spaces, the inclusion of the EV charging. The items, number eight, which are shown just west of the western mixed-use building and just east of the eastern mixed-use building, and we relocated the trash enclosures to be more internal to the site so that they were less publicly visible. And then finally, number nine, in the upper northwest corner, we increased that landscape buffer to that closest adjacent home to approximately 35 feet. Wanted to walk through parking in a little bit of detail. I know we've talked about this in past hearings. So parking is provided in a variety of different ways. All the townhomes have two-car garages. These are actually wider than most two-car garages to provide extra room for storage. So every, every unit has, every townhome unit has those two-car garage spaces. The townhomes on the north end, on both parcels, also have two-car, two-car driveways, which are shown here in green. Surface parking to meet the multifamily parking requirements is provided here and shown in red. The surface parking for the commercial uses is noted within the teal boxes. Additional guest parking is provided along McIntyre, which is shown here in purple. And finally, surface parking is provided for guests, which is shown here in light blue. In total, 252 parking spaces are provided across the site compared to a requirement of 188 spaces. This requirement is based on a minimum of two spaces per townhome unit, which is consistent with code, two spaces per multifamily unit, and four spaces per 1,000 square feet of commercial space. All that is consistent with the code. No guest spaces are specifically noted as required in code, but 64 are provided. These are broken out between the 34 driveway spaces, which will be used by the north townhomes, the 18 surface spaces, which can be used by anyone, and the 12 parallel spaces on McIntyre, which can also be used by anyone. Additionally, we have those 28 bike parking spaces. Really want to encourage people to walk and bike to this community as well. Safety improvements. We took a very close look at what safety improvements could be added to the existing street network. First, we added curb bumpouts, which are shown here in the orange asterix at the intersection of McIntyre and West 93rd Place, and further west at the intersection of West 94th Avenue and West 93rd Place. Next, we added crosswalks. Those are shown here in the solid purple lines, also at the intersection of McIntyre and West 93rd Place. We also added two pedestrian crossing signs at McIntyre and West 93rd Place, a standard pedestrian crossing sign on the south side, shown in the yellow triangle, and eight, and two signs with flashing lights on the north side of the intersection. Those are shown in the light blue triangles, and an image of what those look like are on the right side of the screen, so people can push a button, the lights will flash when they want to cross the street. The mixed-use buildings, as we discussed, are three stories and features storefront glazing along the ground floor commercial spaces. The ground floor of these spaces have been reconfigured to provide that additional commercial square footage we discussed. These buildings include one- and two-bedroom units and a four-sided, modern prairie-style building with a stepped parapet, providing additional visual interest. The two-story townhome buildings include three floor plans in prairie and farmhouse elevation styles. These include a mix of two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, and three-bed, three-and-a-half-bath plans. Materials include stone, lap siding, and board and batten siding, and buildings include straight-pacing entries and covered outdoor patios. Both the townhomes and mixed-use buildings meet the standards of the Development Code and the Candelas Architectural Guidelines. Much of the residential neighborhoods in Candelas today are made up of single-family homes. The addition of these townhomes and mixed-use buildings help provide additional housing diversity and much-needed, missing-middle home options. We've continued to refine the plan over the last three-plus years to address the comments we've heard related to a mix of uses, including retail, providing safety enhancements to the existing network, providing additional vehicular and bike parking, increasing the landscape buffer to the northwest, and reducing maximum building heights. As outlined in your staff report, the proposal for the preliminary plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan and ODP. We have all the approval criteria listed here. We won't go through each of one of those, but happy to talk through any of these details. As part of the master plan, there are existing streets, as well as sufficient utilities, public services, and infrastructure available to serve the development. The PDP is also consistent with the approval criteria. It is consistent with the comp plan and the ODP. The local street network was designed and constructed to serve this development and within the original Candelas family number one PDP. The proposed uses in buildings are compatible with the adjacent residential uses and scale, site design, and character in Candelas, while the mixed-use buildings and pedestrian scale create interest along McIntyre Street to help define the mixed-use village piece of the neighborhood. With that, Marcus is going to just give one quick summary, and we're available for questions.
Great. Thank you again, Mayor and councilmen, councilmembers. I just want to conclude. You've already seen this slide, but I think we can't say it enough, that development today is an iterative process, and to do true inclusive planning with a neighborhood, particularly a neighborhood that is fully built out, and this the access point, it requires full planning with the community, and we believe we have done that. We have done it for three years. We have understood that people need to have built what they saw in their plans. This needs to be a mixed-use gathering place. It needs to be there. We then were told to focus on these five things, that we were very close, and to find the solutions. We think we have found those solutions. We believe we have found the balance. We are meeting all approval criteria. This is a community that is already built, so the drainage, the roads, all of these were planned for these units. They were counted for these units to be there. I want to certainly acknowledge that there is no way we will ever achieve neighborhood unanimity on this site. There will always be opposition, and if you think about your favorite neighborhood gathering place, if it was added after the neighborhood was built, it would always focus on that. But what we are guided by is the comprehensive plan, your land use regulations, and are we meeting those requirements? We are meeting and exceeding those requirements. But most importantly, the neighbors have made this site 1,000 times better. We think this is a remarkably good neighborhood site plan. We think this restaurant and this mixed-use community will work and serve the neighborhood. We can't wait to have families come here and live here, and really help to change this to be a focal point for the neighborhood, to provide those amenities. With all of that, we're certainly here for questions. We would respectfully request approval on this site plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll begin with Erin Bott.
Hello again. I think this is my fifth time here. All right, my name is Erin Bott, and I purchased my TriPoint home located at 9364 Kilmer Way in November of 2017. I emailed you a three-page document on Friday regarding why I'm against this development. I'm not going to rehash those details here because it's just too long. The petition right now is actually at 288 signatures. Today, when I sent it to you, it's 275. And I did submit it to kristin@arvada.org, so it should be on the record. My family chose our home in Candelas over, over one in Leiden Rock because TriPoint sold us on the Five Parks idea. It's right across the street from my house. They showed us a drawing of the retail, and then said to take a drive to Five Parks to get an idea of what it would look like in person. We envisioned ourselves walking to a local restaurant. We grabbing a cup of coffee from a local coffee shop. This idea that TriPoint has sold to us is not what is being presented to us today, and many of our neighbors agree. A few years after we bought this home, TriPoint decided to go in and buy this land as a residential builder, not a retail builder. City council thankfully turned down that plan, and due to the bait-and-switch idea that they were presenting to us. Here's the problem. Again, they're residential. They're not experts in retail. So what did they do? They took the plan that was presented initially that you guys turned down, took out a few townhomes, and added retail to a third of the design. They're saying they're giving us what we want by adding the retail to a third of the portion of the land. This is two ideas. We're taking townhomes, and we're taking retail. Two separate ways to look at this. By adding them together, it's not working. You're taking two puzzle pieces and trying to fit them into one spot. That's why this plan is a failure. It's failing because it's too much. It's either townhomes or it's retail. It's not both. It can't be both. Let's see here. I got off on track. Without the parking and accessibility, businesses are not going to succeed. I've given up on the idea of a local restaurant coming in. In fact, with this plan, having a restaurant would be disastrous for this area. This plan does not allow for the gathering places that they're selling to you. The developers not creating a spot for a gathering place that they're claiming is happening. Those type of businesses will never come into these retail spots. They're going to fail if they do. There's not enough room for their patrons. With all the new development in this area, I'm afraid the retail spots are going to remain vacant and become an eyesore to our neighborhood. We can't even ask the retail developer what their expert opinion is on what type of businesses they would bring because they have requested to remain anonymous due to fear of retaliation. During the planning, city planning commission meeting on November 21st, Mr. Gay and Mr. Knapp voted to pass the plan, but they also stated that they had major concerns about parking congestion and safety. TriPoint bought a piece of land that they should never have bought. They are a residential builder. They are not a retail builder. We should not suffer for their poor business decision.
Thank you, ma'am.
Elizabeth Ash.
Good evening, council. Thank you for being here on this before-school night. I appreciate y'all being here. I know I just came off from Arvada K8s back to school night, so thank you for being here. I am at 15311 West 93rd Place, just down the block and kitty-corner to this development, and I have also been at all of these meetings and most of the community meetings. I think I can summarize, and the almost 300 signatures that you have, prior meetings, we've had 500 signatures. We've had people move out of that area, specifically of Town View, because of this proposed development. So our base of signatures might be a little bit less than they were, but they are still just as meaningful. Here are concerns that have come up. TriPoint has said on one side, it was just said, I think the quote was, "Mixed use will work," and what they've been telling us all along is, "We can't get anybody in there." So we gave this land to this developer, who we won't name, because of fear of retaliation, and Erin mentioned that as well. I'm not sure what kind of retaliation that we're, they're talking about. So if we are now working with somebody that's going to be developing in our community who is afraid of residents, that gives me grave concern, because we really should have a partnership. So I'm very concerned about that. And on that note, they've said they can't get retail, but we've had two restaurants just opening up, mom-and-pop restaurants that are opening up just a mile away. We've had a bunch of retail surrounding us in corridors, so I'm not sure how long ago they couldn't get retail, but it seems like everybody else is doing it. So I'm not sure why this land was given to this developer, this unnamed developer, who also has said, "In order to make this worth my while, I need to put 33 apartments up there." And this was another point that TriPoint brought up at the commission meeting, at the prior meeting, where they have to have these 33 apartments because the developer won't build without them. That's concerning to me as well. At the last community meeting a few weeks ago, it was stated that all parking spaces cannot be both retail and residential, and yet, just right now, it was said that parking, there's parking for everybody to do whatever they want with. So I really want the council to ask a hard question about specifying what those parking spaces are. Almost finally, I am married to a 30-year-retired firefighter, and although TriPoint has done due diligence in can we get vehicles in there, I don't know that they've done due diligence on staging, because if you stage, if there is a fire in this particular development, where they will stage will pretty much cut off the most eastern portion of TriPoint residents to be able to get out of that development. So I really need a hard look at being safe about being able to get out of there. We need to be able to remain safe if fires do occur. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
David Blake.
Good evening.
David Blake. Address is 9426 Loveland Way, Arvada, in the Town View. We are not right beside this development. However, we're just a block away, but we have to access into there by coming off of Candelas Parkway onto McIntyre. One of the things that Marcus just mentioned a little bit tonight was on this public safety, as far as driving past or slowing down with the hope that that'll do that. Hope is not a good solution for trying to avoid car accidents, trying to turn on there. If you drive from east to west on Candelas, there's four entrances into Candelas. One of them is McIntyre, Noble, Salvia, and West 93rd. Three of them have a third lane as you approach that intersection to turn right onto the, to the north, coming off the westbound lanes. The only one that doesn't is McIntyre, and I think this needs to look at a little bit harder. One of the other things that I brought up a couple weeks ago at this neighborhood meeting that TPI had was storm sewer. Where's the water going to go? Right now, you've got two lots there where that are grass and so, rain and so forth. It usually will probably just soak down into it. Now you're going to have all buildings, and then you'll have hardtop. So where's it go? And they kind of, him hauled around a little bit, and they said, "Don't worry about it. Never see the light of day. The water will not run off the surface off of that." I walked around there. There are two catch basins. Only one of them's on that site. One of them's at the northeast, I'm sorry, southeast corner of 93rd and McIntyre, and the other one is over at Kilmer and 93rd on the southeast, which is technically outside of these two sites. So, and if you know anything about Candelas, there's a lot of sump pumps, and they don't need more water running down some of those streets. And another concern I had was the planning commission, I think the last time I looked, that's, I think I heard was April of this year. Have there been any changes between that meeting to what they're presenting to you tonight? If that's the case, shouldn't that go through the planning commission, although they usually vote seven-zip, so we do appreciate the council taking harder look at these things than just the planning commission. And I think that's it. I'll give my time to somebody else.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's Elena Mailer.
I think it's Elena Mailer.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I live in Candellas at 15518 West 95th Avenue, so I am catty-corner to this development. We are, we moved to Candellas for this Town View development to be in this walkable neighborhood. I can walk to the grocery store. We use the orthodontist in other parts of Candellas. We frequent the restaurants. My eye doctor's there. We're loving this. We're loving the idea of a walkable neighborhood, so I can go to other that. One of the other things I think is really great about this development is the economic diversity it's going to bring to our thing. So people can move into a townhome, their family gets bigger, they can pick another house down the street. I think that's going to be great. I think there's a lot of commercial opportunities for small businesses that I am excited about. I think that this is similar to Five Parks with the mixed use because when I go to Five Parks, I can go to the restaurant, and then across the street, you know, there's little businesses, and there's residential units upstairs. So I think this is very similar. I've been thinking about construction and how I'm going to get out of this site when the site's done. There is a substantial road network. If you were to look at the plat, I'm going to have to go out Noble Way for probably nine to 12 months. I'm willing to take that inconvenience to have this. And I also wanted to make sure that I talked a little bit about the drainage. I am an engineer. I am a professional engineer, and drainage is what I do all the time. So there are some very large ponds on the site, and they are, they're called a retention-detention pond. So there's a static water surface that's on the bottom, and then the water goes in. And I have looked at the plans on E-Trackit. I've downloaded. I've looked at the fire turn exhibit. I've looked at the erosion control. And one of the things that I've noticed is there's like roof drain connections, and there's inlets all over the development in front of like the commercial area. Everything's going to be gathered and taken to the inlet system. And that's different than sump pumps, which are pumped to the surface because you can't put groundwater in a pipe. It's got to come to the surface, so there's some water rights there. So anyway, I'm very excited about this development, and thank you for accepting my comments.
Thank you. That's all the sign-up sheets I have. Is there anybody else that would like to address city council on this issue?
There's someone on Zoom.
And I've got a lady coming up from the back, and then we'll get to Zoom.
Hi, I'm Laura Carpenter. I'm at 9327, 9320 Nile Court, Arvada, Colorado. This development will be in my backyard. I'm one of the three homes that sits to the west of the site. And been an Arvada resident, born and raised since I was small, so I've gotten to hear all the comments, all of the suggestions. I've worked through all the different processes and progress that's happened over the last three or four years, and I feel like we're at a point now that they, I feel like that they've, TriPoint's worked really hard to get to a point where they're meeting what their intentions were and what the community they hope has on either side, so of what they want. The biggest concerns, because it is our backyard, is we have lost our two other neighbors in the course of the last year because of this development, and there's other things that have come up along the way because of that. So I am partly in support of what's going on with this development and partly concerned about what it may bring. There's still parking concerns. We see a lot of parking even without this development that leads on the 93rd Street option, but I just wanted to voice my opinion and say that we're trying to be supportive of what's going on. We know there's a development that needs to happen there. We still have concerns for the way the safety and the parking is going to happen. Drainage still. Our neighbors that have left did have major drainage issues. Our sump pumps run 24/7 most of the time, so there are still drainage concerns there. They have stated that they will provide fencing, and I'd like to hope that we can be a part of that solution on if fencing does occur, what options we have, since that will be our backyard now. Other than that, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience? Just ma'am. And actually, when, both of you have sign-up sheets, I think. Just give it to the city clerk, just so that we've got that information.
My name is Kristi Thorson, and I have lived in Town View since September of 2013. We bought into that part of the neighborhood based on there was going to be apartments built where the Town View, or the TriPoint homes were. We were really excited to move into an area that had multi-use or multi-living arrangements, whether it was a single-family home, whether it was going to be a three-story apartment building, which was the plan back in 2013. And those two parcels of land being discussed tonight were always slated to be commercial from, you know, 10 years ago. So that's why we bought in, so we could walk to the grocery store. With this new plan, I am open to having townhomes on part of that land, but the way it is designed is very concerning. My number one is the safety. And like this other gentleman presented, the turnoff from Candellas onto McIntyre, there is no de-acceleration lane. And now with Freedom Street, King Supers, trying to get in and out of that intersection with people on their bikes and scooters. People zooming down Candellas Parkway, and now there's been traffic studies, and they're saying they're only going five to eight miles per hour over that. I am a mother of two young children, and I will not let my kids walk or ride their bike or scooter anywhere near McIntyre and 93rd, Candellas Parkway and 94th. It is not safe. And today, it's not going to be safe at this department. The other two things is safety. If there is a fire or a medical emergency, how are the people in Town View going to get out? We cannot get out without crossing over McIntyre. Yes, we can go to Noble, but the only way to get to Noble is if we pass McIntyre. You have a staging there. We're trapped. I saw the marshal file from the top of my bedroom window. How am I going to get out without passing McIntyre? There is no good safety plan out. You talk about drainage. Again, our bus stop is at Foxtail Pond. In the last community meeting, they said, "Oh, some of this drainage will go to Foxtail." This past winter, there was so much ice over from Foxtail Pond. It was an icy nightmare for my elementary school kids. They couldn't safely get to the bus stop because it was all iced over. So I would ask for you to say no to this development based on safety concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll go to the individual on Zoom.
Craig Romrell.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Craig Romrell. I live in the Candellas neighborhood. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Did you swear yourself in when I was swearing people in?
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Raise your right hand. You swear, swear affirm the testimony you're giving. These proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Very good. Go ahead.
Yes, I live at 18395 West 94th Avenue, here in Candellas. I'm sorry I can't be there in person tonight, but wanted to participate through Zoom and urge you to support this proposal. First off, I think similar to some of the recent comments, I think we do need an additional mix of housing in this area of West Arvada, and I'm supportive of the townhomes being built and also the additional retail. I think Colorado still has a shortage of housing, and I think it benefits our overall Candellas community having a range of product choices available, like these townhomes will offer. I know new development and change like this can be really hard, but I do appreciate the additional outreach that the developer has conducted with many of the additional non-required community meetings, and also their willingness to compromise to develop a site of this meeting, not only the community's needs, but also, you know, staff and the plan requirements. I know many in the community wanted this plan to look very much like Five Parks, and I think the developer's done a good job of trying to bring out some of the similar elements of the Five Parks plan and what they've now proposed. I also think the current plan addresses the previous safety concerns with the developer working to make this site walkable and pedestrian-friendly. And I appreciate the time to express my support and urge the city council to also support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on Zoom? Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment portion, turn it back to the applicant to respond to issues as they see fit.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thanks to the community for their input. As you can see, great feedback and valuable insight on how we approach this. Just a couple of issues, and then Bonnie will address, and then our traffic engineer, if that's okay, will address the traffic issues. I do want to be sure and point out that the discussion about the two conflicting ideas, why are there two different uses here? I do want to go back to 2022 when we came before you. We actually specifically, as a promise to the neighborhood, changed the comp plan designation. So there are two comp plan, two different comp plan designations on this site. Those two vary ideas, a residential zone district, and then on both sides of McIntyre, it's actually a mixed-use zone district with a residential emphasis. It is that exact blending of concepts and ideas that makes it a true mixed-use gathering place. We engage the street on 93rd and Candellas, but we also provide that community gathering place, that mixed-use element that needs to be there. So we actually think it is that idea that really brings it to life. So we think that's a really important part of it. I do want to say that we have a mixed-use partner on this site who has worked very closely with us. We specialize in entitlements and community infill projects all over. We work on retail sites. That's, TriPoint is a residential developer. That resident is an Arvada resident. He lives actually in Five Parks and is going to develop this site on the retail. He has done a very thorough analysis, and we are basically providing a way to build that retail today with these multifamily units. This would not be standalone retail. The other retail outlets that you mentioned are being built and owned and leased by somebody else. This is going to be a neighborhood feel, and that allows us to build them right away and not have this linger for 10 or 15 years. We will be able to build this space so that we have an active community partner and actual retail there. Couldn't agree more. Retail is coming back. Just to the east of this, there's a remarkable volunteer path that comes right off of Kilmer. It's a walking trail where nobody follows the sidewalk because they're all going to the new Freedom Social Hall. People are going to walk to retail here. It works. Go look just to the edge on Kilmer. There's a remarkable trail that shows where the neighborhood is going to this new retail establishment. We want people to walk here. That's why we have this, we have ample parking. We have met the code and exceeded that with the 30-guest parking, and we really want to address that issue. I'll now have Bonnie address a few things on parking specifically, and then our traffic engineer on the traffic improvements themselves. I do want to say, we could not care, we care so much, as the neighbors do, about safety, and we are trying to implement actual changes to provide existing problems that come into the neighborhood. We are addressing existing issues that we think we can help solve with the addition of this neighborhood.
Thanks, Marcus. Just wanted to address two more technical items. If you could go to slide number six, just wanted to quickly talk about fire. We have worked closely with the fire department. Not six. I don't know where I got that number from. It is on sheet seven of our PDP as well. We have a very specific fire and emergency access plan showing exactly where the emergency vehicles go within the community to make sure that that fire access is provided for both of the parcels. And then, if you could go to slide 14, I'm pretty sure that one's actually right, that number. Wanted to clarify, back one more, sorry. Thank you. Wanted to clarify what we were talking about parking. If you look at the table at the top of this slide, the middle column is required, so that is pulling the requirements specifically from the land development code. The right column is obviously what we're providing within this community. So the townhomes, we are providing the required parking. The multifamily, we are providing the required parking. Commercial, we are providing the required parking. What I was saying about spaces that are more flexible is the guest requirement. So code requires zero guest spaces. The only requirements are the three rows above that. So the 12 parallel spaces on McIntyre and the 18 surface spaces sprinkled out throughout the community have a little flexibility on who can park in those additional guest spaces. So just wanted to clarify how all those parking details work. And with that, Marcus first.
Before you go back, can you show us on this picture where the staging would be for fire protection?
Find what that slide I thought I was referring to.
If you've got another slide.
While she looks through that, Mayor, I'll answer one thing that I missed. I wanted to be sure and note the neighbor on the west. There are one of those three homes. We actually have an agreement with those three neighbors where we will be building a six-foot privacy fence, enhanced landscaping, and helping with that drainage. They have a very substantial drainage issue in the back of those yards, and we're going to tie that in and kind of carry that water out of there as well. So I want to say that on the record, they certainly will be involved in that privacy fence as well, that discussion.
You're willing to make that a condition of approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that would be, so you're going to actually pipe?
It's, I'll have our engineer.
Or French drain or whatever.
Exactly. French drain is how we've designed it right now, sir, to carry that. So we would do that, and we would be happy to condition that.
Thank you.
I will just note also, that was one of the townhomes that was removed. So since we were here last June, that has changed from 13 feet to 34 feet of buffer. And to the gentleman, there have been no changes since the planning commission. This is consistent with that submittal.
Thank you.
Thank you for pulling up that slide. It's slide 58, but the six is shown here. So this is our emergency access plan. You can see through the LA network within the neighborhood, there are kind of a light green shading and a light pink shading. So the light green is where the emergency vehicles can go through the site as approved by the fire department. And then the three-story mixed-use buildings on McIntyre, due to their height and compliance with the building codes for buildings of that type, those are also sprinkled.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Curtis Rowe with Kimble Horned Associates, and my address is 6200 South Syracuse Way, Suite 300, Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80111. It's a pleasure to be here to answer any traffic questions. A couple that I heard from the public that I thought that I would discuss again relative to the safety. Obviously, Bonnie went through the improvements that are being proposed along 93rd that include the curb-bull bouts. That's going to reduce the width of the street, and it'll be very evident to the drivers as they're entering and exiting McIntyre that there is an intersection there because right now it's a wide street. Those curb-bull bouts are going to be on every corner, all four of those, and it's going to give a narrowing effect. That's going to help reduce the speed of traffic and shorten the distance for that pedestrian to cross. On the northwest corner, there's the community center and pool. There's also a bus stop there. So we feel as though that those improvements will be worthwhile, as Marcus mentioned, just for the existing condition, but also then with this project. You know, one other element as part of the safety improvements that we're doing specifically at that intersection is proposing that there would be pedestrian-activated, meaning pedestrian push button, that will activate the flashing lights for the crossing. So if somebody chooses to or wants to activate those lights to cross that McIntyre Street, they will have the ability to do so. There was a question about Candellas Parkway and the speed of traffic on Candellas Parkway. You may be aware, Kimble Horn, we are doing a safety study along Candellas Parkway also outside of this project. You know, we did find that the speeds on Candellas Parkway are significantly higher than the posted speed limit. Traffic is traveling at 53 miles per hour. That's the 85th percentile speed, you know, whereas it's posted at 45 miles per hour. So that means that 85% of the traffic is traveling 53 miles per hour, and so 15% is even traveling faster than that. And so based upon that condition, really what the issue is on Candellas Parkway is that the roadway is currently overbuilt for the volume it's serving. Candellas Parkway could have a volume six to eight times greater than what it's serving today. today. So not double, not triple, not even four times, six to eight times higher volume than what's there today. Based upon changes in that community and development changes, we've provided a preliminary recommendation that we actually reduce Candela's Parkway to just provide a single through lane in each direction. There's plenty of capacity available to do that. By reducing that to a single lane each direction, that will provide a narrowing of the roadway, help control the speed. And then in that case, too, we can provide a separated buffered bike lane. There are bike lanes today, but they will be separated then because we'll have that extra width. At McIntyre itself, with the additional lane that is available, both east and west, a separate right turn lane then could be striped. And so that was a preliminary recommendation that we gave to the city as part of that safety study.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, and does that complete your presentation? Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everybody for, again, doing it the Arvada way. Everybody's been very cordial, very appropriate, and I certainly thank you for that. I'll turn it over to city council for questions. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask a question of the development team, and I heard this come up, and I believe you answered it, but maybe not quite specifically. When it comes to the building of the townhomes versus the building of the commercial with the residential over the top, will they both be built at the same time?
Yes, we look at this as a one-phase development, right? And we think it's very important to bring forward that mixed-use component as well. So we look at this as a one-phase.
Okay. And will TriPoint be actually doing all the building, or will there actually be two separate builders in there at the same time?
There will be two separate builders. We will be, you know, basically building the infrastructure, right, as one team, and then the two different builders building the two separate components.
At the same time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have. I would like to, when everyone's had their questions answered, I would like to make a motion on this.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. And I also will, one, I echo the mayor's sentiments. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and for your comments. Everybody's been excellent tonight. And thank you to the applicant for your thorough response. You actually answered a number of my questions that I was going to ask you. I do have a couple more, however. In regards to the retail space, so I'm pleased that there's more retail, 10,700 square feet. That's quite substantial, particularly for an area like this. What are the mix going to be? I know you're not the retail developer, but are you going to have larger spaces, smaller spaces, et cetera?
Sure, thanks, counselor. The mix of that is to be determined, obviously, in the use. But the way we've looked at that, and just to be clear, the reason we added that additional retail space was part of the community feedback and other feedback, but it was important, we had just basically a lobby area. So the footprint stayed the same, but we made that retail to really engage the street. So we believe that right now the retail developer thinks this is probably three or four retail spaces there. We would love to have the restaurant and the coffee shop that was mentioned there. So obviously, counselor, that could be built out in that space. But again, we think that's the mix of uses that we are hearing. Again, there has been remarkable interest in the new social that is open there and a lot of activity. So we really want those kind of neighborhoods supporting retail uses.
Okay, excellent. And for the one-to-two-bedroom apartments, what's the mix going to be? How many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom? And what do you anticipate, rough estimate, price points on that to be?
Sure. We are looking just at our architect to give the mix of uses, if that's okay, and then we'll talk about price.
Sure, absolutely.
They're looking for the full mix. We do have that down specifically on the 33 units. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to ask or answer them while they're looking.
Where would the detention ponds be located? Another resident actually came forward to answer that one, so.
Great. It's actually, I'll have our engineer address that. It's tying into the system. One great thing about this in non-engineering terms, being the last site, is the rest of the neighborhood is built out, and that includes the infrastructure, the drainage systems, and all of those. So working with your great city team and all the referral agencies, we have planned all the utility connections, but we'll answer that specifically.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Koontz with Martin Martin Consulting Engineers, 12499 West Colfax. I've been the civil engineer for Candela's since 2006, master-planned this whole community, and the ponds are located just north on Kilmer. They were designed to take this site. The site was actually master-planned at about 90% impervious, and it's actually only about 70% impervious, so the pond will be a little bit oversized for the proposed development.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Yeah, so, trying to see, yeah. And then I agree with the mayor about a condition of approval for working with the neighbors on the west side. Other than the apartment mix, I think I've got mine answered for the moment.
We are getting that number. I promise we'll come back and answer that question.
Ready to get Mr. Fiver? Or if he's close to having the answer to that question, we'll get the answer and then give it to Mr. Fiver.
Hi, Alex Duran, Garden Sudek Architects, 5975 South Quebec Street. On the unit count, we've got one, two, three one-bedrooms in each building, and then one, two, three, four, five of the two bedrooms.
Per floor?
Per floor.
So 12 one-bedroom, and then that would be 21 two-bedroom.
And then we've got one manager's unit, so that adds the extra odd unit.
Gotcha. So 20 two-bedroom, 12 one-bedroom, and a manager's unit.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fiver?
All right, you're going to step up there and?
Sure.
I'd like to speak to somebody at the microphone.
Oh, you bet. No problem.
So your parking ratio between the east and the west, and I'm going to be all over the place in my questions, as obviously the conversation went all over, so just bear with me, but the parking ratio on the east versus the west of McIntyre, it seems like it's a lot more on the west than the east. And I'm trying to think of that in relationship to the commercial.
Sure.
What's your thought process on that parking disparity between the two properties?
Yeah, I think looking at the overall site, and if we could go to our parking exhibit, and Bonnie can answer specific questions, just one thing to focus on, as you've seen, sir, there's been a lot of comments about Kilmer, which is on the east side of this, and that residential. Obviously, the east side is a smaller parcel that we have on the east side of McIntyre. What we actually thought was really important from a planning perspective is we now have 12 townhomes, and the parking associated with them, 36 parking units that buffer Kilmer. We have heard repeatedly that that's a really important protection there of Kilmer, as that is more into the neighborhood, if you will, right? That's that Kilmer side. So we actually think that buffer is really, really important to have that there from a residential. Obviously, sir, you're seeing additional, you're asking about the guest parking, the multifamily parking.
Commercial.
And the commercial, exactly. So we are meeting code, and again, that node, I think that's going to work very well crossing the street. That's a part of our parking plan, are those bumpouts and that flashing beacon where you actually will cross McIntyre. We want it to act like a main street. I don't, as you go to a node like that, you park on either side. Because of the larger number of units, 27 townhomes on the west side, there is also additional parking there, right? So that naturally lays out to have more parking on that side. As far as the overall mix, Bonnie, any additional things on the commercial parking layout?
Yeah, just to provide the specific numbers on either side, so those teal spaces that are specifically intended to meet the four per thousand, we have 28 on the west side and 16 on the east side. A lot of this is, it's intended to work together. It is a PUD, and it's trying to find that right balance. The west parcel is obviously bigger than the east parcels, or there's a little bit more room for that parking, and trying to find that balance of creating the additional retail that was requested by council last year. I think some of the push and pull that happens in the design of this over the last three years is, last summer, we heard, have less residential, increase the parking, and increase the retail. By increasing the retail, we're even more so increasing the parking requirement. So we wanted to come here and say that we are providing 100% compliance with the land development code, but it's a give and take on how these spaces work together. This is also part of the reason for the pedestrian improvements. Retail uses like to be next to each other because people like to walk from one use to the other. So having people be able to park on the west side, go to use on the west building, go to use on the east building, and have great connections between those two, works well in this kind of space.
And how are you going to manage the difference between the commercial and the apartment parking?
We work through that situation all the time in mixed-use developments. There is certainly posting, sir, as you see the laid-out of the specific parking. But we understand the reason mixed-use centers are, they work well is because the usage times are really different, right? The retail times, the coffee shop has people parking in the morning or the afternoon. A restaurant could have either a breakfast or a night crowd, and then, of course, people come home and they're AM and PM peak. So we've evaluated the traffic impact, but also understanding that parking impact. We think we have really different uses here again, and trying to have that parking, again, exceeding code by 30 places. Most importantly, we want to be sure and point out those 34 additional driveway spaces, those are purposeful on the north side of this. We didn't do it on the south side units because that's Candela's Parkway. So what we wanted to do is be sure that the residents on the north side weren't parking on 93rd. They weren't parking in front of the park in some of those areas. We wanted that to be street parking, so that's there. So why we put those two extra spots for each driveway was very purposeful, so we weren't spilling into the neighborhood or into the available parking.
And so I'm still focusing, I'm not talking about the townhouses.
Sure.
And maybe it's a little difficult because you're representing TriPoint, and we don't know who the other developer is, so I don't know how you're representing them.
Yeah.
Unless you are.
Well, we have, I'm representing the applicant. We have a very specific PUD that goes through the units. We have worked very closely with them. The whole site is planned, going through that preliminary plan, so we are representing the full application.
And the full application is TriPoint?
That's correct.
And this is subbed out to another person?
We will have a development partner, which is often the case in any master-planned site or mixed-use site. You have the primary developer, and then you have partners that you bring in on that. So just as we've done in Lowry or any community infill project throughout, we always would have the primary developer and then the partner or collaborative partner on the site as well.
Did we, did we see elevations of the commercial? Do we have that up in front of us? And did you design those? Did TriPoint design those, or did your partner design those?
Sure. We designed, Garden Sudek is the architect. We did show the three-story buildings on both sides of McIntyre in the presentation, and those are included in our submittal as well. We do have those elevations, and we're happy to show them. I'm sorry, it's two or three slides past this, we do have the image of the architecture.
All right, so let me just cross off a few things as we go.
Sure. This shows the ground floor retail, sir.
Okay, retail. Let me just check off a few things so I don't repeat. So you made a comment that this is a gateway to the community and a gathering place. And what strikes me on this is, why did we put the retail inward towards the residential, not to the primary street, which is Candela's? And maybe that's a question to the city, but it just seemed like that's odd to put parking on an activated corner versus the actual retail or commercial.
Yeah, I'm happy to have Bonnie address that, but generally, you want to park in front of retail. So you want to have street parking, the activation of that, that main street feel. So we actually thought it was very important to have parking on McIntyre and actually engaging the storefront. And again, engaging that pattern of turning that, we really do want to slow that traffic and the speed coming into the neighborhood.
Yeah, just to add to that, it's really about creating this as neighborhood commercial. Candela's Parkway, as we discussed, is a busier street. Having the commercial on McIntyre gives it more of a neighborhood feel, more of a walkable feel. If it's fronting on Candela's, it's a little bit harder to get to, and as Marcus says, you don't have that ability to park right in front of it. If you're, you know, picking up that coffee or picking up, you know, food you ordered, we're all looking for that entree parking space. And then, again, we heard some traffic concerns on Candela's Parkway, and so how do we minimize that by having people enter into the community?
Well, because it is a gateway, I'm just very, very curious what that will look like as a gateway to Town View, especially when, you know, originally you proposed trashcans in the entrance to this community. So I'm curious, what did you do different to make it the gateway to the community? Because you moved the trash, which, thank you, because I do live in this community, but I don't understand how you can make that comment and then not talk about how you make that, that the gateway to the community. I'm quoting you.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the landscape plans.
Because we didn't even go over any of that, and it's just, it's hard for me to envision this when it's easy for you to do these top-down views and not show us what it's going to look like. Because I have a feeling it's not going to be what you guys are talking about. So, especially when there's an anonymous builder involved, that you won't tell us the name.
So the gateway includes a monument feature on the northwest corner of the Candela's Parkway and McIntyre intersection, and then there are, that corner is really focused on creating a landscape entry, and then kind of the street section for McIntyre is a wider, more urban street section with tree gates to create a more walkable environment.
So sidewalks and the monument that's already there? There's already a monument there. You're not adding a monument.
We're adding the trees that are there. So there's a sidewalk, there's trees, there's going to be benches, and different facilities for people to walk through these and rock to this commercial. We have a commercial storefront. I'm not sure what additional.
I'm just trying to, trying to understand what your definition of gateway to the community is.
Okay.
And a gathering place. And I haven't heard of any gathering place, no pocket parks, no benches, no lighting design, anything that would say what this is.
Sure.
Other than you're putting commercial and you increased it.
So listen, I'm happy to address that, and I think this is absolutely a gateway. As the neighbors testified, there are four primary accesses to the neighborhood.
I'm just talking about this one.
By definition, this is a gateway. Sir, to engage it, 29th, think of it, whatever your favorite street is, that becomes the gateway, and you have to engage that street. This is a mixed-use center that is a main street. We did a very thorough presentation that talked about the streets, the site, the landscaping, the parking on McIntyre. We've gone into great detail on that. What we think is important is finding the balance of that open space. To have more open space, we have the two plazas that really provide, the urban plazas to slow traffic as well, but we also had to find a way to provide the parking that people wanted to see. So that's that challenge, to have additional parking. You can't have as many of the pocket parts. It upgrades that gathering place. But I will say, sir, at the right-hand corner of that screen from 93rd, if you go out there today from 93rd, there is this volunteer path, a path that we call it a volunteer, where everybody just walks, right? You understand that very well, because they are walking to the social. People are walking through the neighborhood to get to retail.
That will be there with this. So we need to make sure that the path that will be routed through here is, supports walkable communities.
Couldn't agree more. We've actually reached out to the city to change our sidewalk plan.
Right now, it looks like I pull in with parking lot, I mean, onto this corner. There's nothing gateway-ish coming off of Candela's in there, but we'll see.
Yeah, sir, we really believe this is a terrific plan. I do want to say the developer is under contract, he is an Arvada restaurant. That's commonplace when we have a retail partner, that you don't name the retail partner as you go through that process.
Okay, passage of time, just want to point out, you asked for a, just want to clarify it for the record.
Yes, sir.
You asked for a continuance because Bonnie was not available, right? It wasn't because you wanted another community?
No, sir, I actually said there are two specific reasons.
You only mentioned one, though, but.
I actually would be happy to share. I said we were going to have a meeting that we had actually already notified and picked, selected a date. So we did say there were two reasons for the continuance.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the record. The townhouse two-car widths?
Yes, sir.
The actual car garage, what is those widths?
Sure. We'll go through your flow. We have an actual image to show that, so we'll show the image of that. In addition to the garage widths, as you see this slide, you have to go right past our thank you slide, so slide 30 in our presentation. Sure, this shows the exact widths. There's a 27 clear there. I do want to note that in addition, because we understand this, we have 115 feet of square feet of extra storage, and then the driveway apron, we also wanted to be sure and show a pickup. There's a lot of pickups that end up here, and that has plenty of room to park in the garage as well.
Okay. And then the parking outside driveways, they're all going to be this. Okay. And then the parking outside driveways, they're all going to be this 19, I'm assuming that's 19.5 inches or something?
Yes, sir, that's the typical.
There won't, there won't be any shorter than that, right?
No, sir.
Okay. So on the PED sign on that corner, why not recommend a four-way stop?
Sure. I'll have our engineer address that.
Yes, Lo, Curtis Rowe, again. We did look at it. Unfortunately, the traffic volumes from the side street are not high enough to warrant always stop control. The MUTCD has guidelines that identify that you need 200 vehicle units on the approaches for the minor street and 300 on the major for eight hours in the day. It is something that can be studied after the development is there. We don't believe that it's going to be warranted though otherwise, and placing always stop control at intersections where they are not warranted are, is actually a safety issue. There are more crashes that occur at always stop intersections that aren't warranted because drivers don't expect them on the major street, and so that's why those warrants are in place.
Okay. And then the 40-foot on the commercial. I'm assuming that's to the edge of the building and does not include any HVAC or units on top, right?
On the architecture, sir, on the parapet, right? Yes, if we can show, sorry again, that
Back to the image.
Residential, or, excuse me, the image of the architecture.
Yep, back, oh.
There you go. And then I'll have our architect answer that. Next slide, I think, showed the architectural images.
The elevation.
Yes, the height is to the parapet.
Right there.
Not including any mechanical on the roof.
So I'm assuming it's screened and everything else up at the top?
It will be screened and required.
And no setback. Okay. And, and is there any reason why, is it just because of financial? It needed to be three stories with that many units, all financial?
Yes, actually, the, the mixed-use comprehensive plan, the zone district calls there for a 45-foot height. We've reduced that to 40. We do think actually to make it an active gathering place, you need people living there and activating that as well. We all strive really hard to have three-story true mixed-use, and yes, we think that third story is important. It also, most importantly, gets the retail built. We went to the community for a year and a half and talked about temporary uses, but they knew that these units would actually lead to the retail being built, so people would come in and open restaurants and coffee shops.
It wasn't because the, your other person that's owning this needed revenue to cover for potential risk of the commercial?
Yes, sir, just what I said. The brick and mortar is too expensive here to do as a standalone. It needs to have a mixed-use feel, as was directed by council, and we believe this brings the mixed use.
I'm talking about the density, not the mixed use.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about the density of it.
Yes.
Did it need to have 33 units? Like, because
Yes, sir.
Five Parks is two stories, and it has only a few units on top. So now you're bringing in a three-story building into the neighborhood that does not exist today in that area, other than the hospital. I don't even, I think that's three stories, or the medical building.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, this is, this is new. So this is bigger than the houses to the north of this.
That's right. We did believe that, and he believed we needed three stories to have 33 units. That is the number that we needed to be able to build the retail and the mixed-use component.
Okay, and then, so did you look at any shadowing effects on the neighborhood to the north with that building? And how far is it from the curb?
I'll turn to our planning team to go through if there were any shadow studies, Alex or Bonnie.
Because I believe this is a school bus stop area, and if we're creating icing issues and other issues too, we should address that or put a setback.
Yeah, first, if we could clarify exactly where the bus stop is, it's on, if you could go to slide 36. The bus stop is actually located one block to the north, where those plus signs are.
Stops.
So want to just clarify that it's not directly in this site. As far as the location of the three-story buildings, you were talking before about the gathering spaces. So we specifically put plazas on the north side of both of those mixed-use buildings to help create additional gathering spaces. Those interact with the existing rec center. Like I said before, the synergy between these uses helps all these uses be more successful and getting people to congregate at the loc, at 93rd and McIntyre with the existing rec center is much safer than congregating at Candela's Parkway. I'll see if we can get those specific setbacks to both the right-of-way and to the existing single-family homes to the northeast, if you have another question that we can, we'll pull that.
So you can look at that while, the width of McIntyre, are you widening McIntyre?
Yes, we are widening McIntyre. We have a slide that shows this as well. Slide 35. So the section at the top of the page is what the existing cross-section looks like today. So we have two travel lanes shown in yellow, and then the on-street parking lanes shown in blue on either side. The proposed section, essentially what we're doing is we're bumping the on-street parking on McIntyre into the site on the east and the west. So we have the space for three travel lanes, one being a turn lane internal, and then push the on-street parking out to give a little bit more space on McIntyre.
So the center lane will be a turn, left turn, both, both north and south?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. I think we got that one. Okay, so your commercial space, you increased it, but if I recall correctly, a lot of that retail space last time was consumed by the lobby and the apartments. You did mention it. I just want to confirm that the commercial space, the building didn't grow. It basically, you reduced the footprint of the apartments, the lobby and whatever it did.
Correct. We did not grow the footprint of the building. We changed how the space on the ground floor of the buildings was used.
For the apartments, like the manager's leasing office?
Primary, like lobby space.
Okay. So that's how you gained that space? Where'd you get that? Turn lanes, you got that one? So the water runoff, so you're just going to use the detention pond of Foxtel down the street. I don't know if you know this or not, but I'm sure your partner might, that that pond is having issues. And so it's having a lot of issues. So have you assessed what your impacts are with that, that current state of that pond?
Yeah, hi again, David Kuntz. The existing pond is operating as intended, I believe. It has a wetland bottom that's supposed to collect sediment. It's a sedimentation basin to prevent that from going into downstream water. So it just needs to be mucked out periodically, basically.
It's not functioning, just so you know.
It's functioning as a detention pond, as far as I know. I guess
Now, you might want to talk to Metro District. But I'm a little worried about that, that part, because if you're adding to that, I'm a little concerned about your water. I don't know if the city is involved with that, but probably need to discuss that a little bit more. But it, you're just, you're going to have to figure that out. I, I mean, there's nothing to do about it, other than you're going to have to figure it out.
Yeah, this is an existing HOA or Metro District functioning, so we've been told exactly how to tie in to do that, and we are meeting all requirements for utility connections.
Okay. Does the city check that? Does the city check, check that detention pond capabilities? Because last I knew, it needed to be dredged, it was having drainage issues, it was having a slew of problems.
The city does. We do have a, a program where we go out and inspect all of our ponds. This pond was certified in 2012 and was functioning op, operating at a functional level at that point. And we are doing additional surveying on that pond, but as, to date, and as far as our records show, it is functioning as was designed.
And is that pond managed by the Metro District, or is it the city consume responsibility, or assumed responsibility of that pond?
It's a Metro District pond.
Is there any referrals to the Metro District on this impact for that pond? Since they own it and have to manage it, do we refer to them? And did they sign up on that?
We didn't, we didn't receive any comments from them, but yeah, it does go to the Metro District. So that's something that we would also, again, when they should have go forward, it would also, on their final plans, it would also be referred to the Metro District.
And the Metro District can
Well, they
Express some issues?
Well, they comment their concerns and then work with the developer and the city on that one.
Okay, okay. We might need to, I'll figure out how we need to reach out to them, but I, I don't know if that's happening. I don't know if they know that. So parking on 93, moving to that, there's no parking, in your parking count, that didn't include parking on the, on-street parking, right, of 93?
That is correct, sir.
And then, I'm almost done, so the rest of the council can chime, chime in here. You did the drawings for the fire. Okay, so the last one, the six-foot privacy fence is against the covenants of the Metro District. So I don't know, how are you going to pass that when you cannot put a privacy fence inside the Metro District?
So we, and thank you for bringing that, sir. We had a discussion, just kind of brought this idea up, that we would be able to provide fencing separation from those three homes. There's pretty substantial grade change, as you know, those homes on the west. So, sir, we'll work through that process. We are committed to providing a privacy fence, and we have met with those three neighbors. Two of the three are here tonight, and I wanted to be sure and say that on the record. So, sir, we will work through the approval that is allowed by both the Metro District and the city.
It won't get approved. So why are we even promising that?
We are providing a privacy fence, is what we're promising. We had indicated that we hoped we could get a six-foot fence, so I'm not overpromising. We are promising a privacy fence, and we will go through that process.
So there's no privacy fences in Candela's per the covenants, and it's all actually from the city's plans. It was pushed onto the Metro District?
There is privacy fence on some of the areas.
On the, on the alley lots is the only thing I can think of.
But around the development, yeah.
Articular roads only. There's no, not between neighbors.
There are certain parts of, in Candela's that we've allowed the six-foot privacy fence.
Because the Metro
Mostly to the west, and then this side, depending on the PUD that they're proposing, and that conversation did happen because of the neighbors to the west. This area around it does not have, adjacent to it, but if you go north of this property, there is also privacy fence on those.
Those are alley lot homes.
Right.
That's different than the rest, but the general homes have split rail fence only. So I'm just trying to understand this, because if, I, I think you're promising something that might not be allowed.
Sir, we're an alley-loaded home, addressing these homes where alley loaded for those, so we will approach it in the same way.
Okay, that's a good answer.
You bet.
The French drain and maintenance, who'll be managing that?
Sure. We actually have that, we have drawn some initial drawings on that French drain, so, David, you want to address that? Because I think it's a very fair question. The mayor asked about a condition on it.
So the site typically drains to the north and east, so that western boundary where water enters this proposed development, we're going to run storm sewer, private storm sewer lines and area drains up to the property line to help collect water off of that adjacent property and convey it to the pond.
And this will be done within this existing property?
It's within the proposed development.
And then, back to the fences, the fences will be on your property, and you'll be the responsible party to maintain those fences, whatever they are? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that will be a condition of approval, if, if approved?
We will accept that condition for sure, yes.
I think I, I think that is it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mooreman?
Thank you. A number of my questions have been answered, so I appreciate that. I guess I'll start with the city team and make sure I have a clear understanding of the Candela's master plan. Do we have in that the delineation of what mixed use is, and, you know, is it, is it percentage of residential to commercial? What, how is that defined in the Candela's master plan?
On this one, we did look at the, what was with the ODP, what was allowed in the MX, mixed use, and they meet that, the, the housing standards, so in terms of architectural standards. There are various elevations that would need to follow. We usually look at that at the final development plan and how they're meeting it, and that's how we, we approve it. So these are just their proposed, what the building's going to look at, and they'll finalize it at the final development plan.
Okay, thank you.
And meeting the standards.
So let's talk about parking. So we're looking for commercial, it's four parking spaces per 1,000 square feet in the, in this proposal, and we've been, of course, always comparing this to five parks. So what is Five Parks parking per square foot?
I don't know that we have that off the top of our heads, but we can certainly do a quick bit of research.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate it, because I, I know we, we've talked about it before, and I just wanted to bring that back up again, so I appreciate that. All right, well then, I do have a question for the applicant on the space for trash. Are you also including space for recycling?
That's a great question. Can I, yes, we are, and if I can come back, we are including that. We have, what we wanted to do after the feedback last time is we're actually building the containers, an actual dedicated area that's a little more buried into our site, instead of that you would see it as you enter the site. We concur with the councilman, that's a very important to have that as part of the site. I think we will have residential as part, recycling, sir, as part of our townhomes development. I don't know if we've incorporated that fully into the multifamily yet, but I'm sure we're looking at that since it's an integrated system throughout.
Yes, I would, I would ask that you do that.
Sure.
And, and just so you're aware, that in 2026, all multifamily units will need to have recycling, so we need to make sure that we're planning well in advance for that.
Terrific. Couldn't agree, yeah.
And, and also for the commercial, too. They need to have, and that's a problem we often run into, is there's just not planned space for it.
Yeah, we've been very intentional about that, planning for that, so thank you. I think this is the right scale, too. People really struggle with those 200-plus units, right, multifamily. I think this is the right scale to have that recycling. Sir, I will say to your earlier question, because our retail is just over 10,000 square feet, there's obviously a blend of retail parking, depending on the use. An insurance agent is different than a retail or a restaurant. But we're just over 10,000 square feet, so in your code, that has a commercial center, and so we average that at four per thousand. So that's why we're parking it at that code. We've shown the mix of things, but that's how we get to those conclusions and the parking ratios.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's all my questions this time. I'll wait for, yeah, you ready? Okay.
Yes, so Five Parks is parked at, for retail, at 3.3 spaces per thousand, so this is a little more parking per thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I actually only had one additional question. For the parking for the residents that live in the apartments, is that in any way covered, carports, et cetera?
A portion of that is covered. The south end of the building has, it's covered on the top, but it's not fully enclosed.
That's fine. Would residents be, like, renting those spaces, or are they going to be assigned to specific units?
They'll be assigned.
Okay. My, my one thought about this is, is, well, the west side is no stranger to things like hail and blizzards. So my recommendation is that perhaps we, just as a, it also serves as a nice delineator between what's available for the commercial versus what's available for the residents who live there. Just covered parking for those residents' carports, et cetera, just to protect people's property, because we know storms will come.
Mr. Fiver?
Did you get that number on the shadow?
So the, oh gosh, I hope. So the minimum setback on the northeast building to the southern right-of-way of McIntyre is 22 feet, and the minimum distance from that building to the first residential lot on the north side is 94 feet.
That's from building to building, or?
That's from the multifamily building to the southern lot line of the northern lots.
So not to the building, but to the lot line?
Correct.
Okay, and 22 feet to the right-of-way, so is that the curb, or is that?
That is the back of sidewalk, so you'd still have the sidewalk and the tree lawn.
So it's 22 feet south of the, of the line of the sidewalk, south, and there's still the sidewalk, the curb?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. One question I had at your previous presentation on this, you indicated you would be willing to accept as a condition for approval within the, is there an HOA? Is that, are you going to have an HOA, or what's the?
We will have a sub-HOA, yes, sir.
Sub-HOA, that people have to use their garages for parking, so that they truly will be able to use the, the driveways for additional parking for, for their guests?
Yes, sir. We completely concur that we would be willing to condition that or covenant that as part of our HOA, yes.
Very good, thank you. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Mayor, can I, I'm sorry. You're going to do a motion. Real quick, can I add on to that? Is there something in your covenant, or however you're going to do the sub-HOA between the apartments and the townhouses, that there's some sort of resolution conflicts? I'm assuming they're managed differently?
Yes, sir. We would have that as a very common provision. That hasn't been found, but yes, that will be included.
So if the apartments can't find their parking spot, they can get with the HOA and straighten that out with the townhome?
And I think that really goes to, Carol mentioned that final plat when we put that in. But, sir, we agree that having denoted guaranteed spots for if I live in the apartment and that mix of uses. So yes, sir, we're going to try to alleviate, alleviate all of those issues. Most importantly, we believe being 64 places over code is most important in that parking ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, before the motion's made, I'm the voice.
I apologize, Mr. Jones.
That's okay. I just wanted, for the record, to note that I had eight questions, all of which have been answered, so I don't need to go through them. But I appreciate my fellow council members and their like-minded questions, so I appreciate that.
Very good. Ms. Marah?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to move that a planned unit development, PUD development plan, generally located north of Candela's Parkway and McIntyre Street, bounded by West 93rd Place and Kilmer Way in the city of Arvada, Colorado, be approved with two conditions. One, that garages be used for parking and not for storage. And two, that the developer work with the residents on the west for drainage and privacy fencing issues. This motion is based on the findings of fact and required conditions adopted by the planning commission. And I'd like to make a comment. So we've seen this multiple times. I think speaks to the nature of these types of developments, particularly when the rest of the area is already developed. If this were all being developed now and developed together, it's a little bit different, because residents can then take a look and say, "Well, that works for me, I'll live here." Or "That doesn't work for me, I won't live here." When it comes in later, it always brings lots of uncertainty and questions. However, do you think that this particular development and this process has yielded multiple community meetings? Obviously, we have seen this three times in three different iterations. And so there has certainly been lots of working together between the existing community and this team, who is, who is desiring to develop this property, to come up with what can best, you know, can best be done here. It gets difficult if you think we have to satisfy everybody's concerns, because I don't believe everybody will agree, as we saw with the public comment tonight. For some folks, the thing they would like to see most is nothing. See, this just stay the way it is. Other folks would like to see something very different. And obviously, it's very difficult for this development team to square those things together with everybody there. I will note that on this particular, particular development, that they have done significant work to try to bridge those gaps, to try to make this work. I think there are challenges here, probably operationally for this development as they go forward, to fill what will be a little bit unconventional retail and will be difficult retail. However, I think accomplishing that will yield incredibly good results for this community. Myself, I'm very privileged to live in a place where I can walk to commercial. And I got to tell you, until you've lived that way, you don't appreciate what a great opportunity and amenity it is. And my belief is that with these retail spaces, as residents start to get to see some places in there and get to start using them, they'll develop a great appreciation for them, much like what has happened in five parks. So I think this is a really good opportunity. I think this is a very nice job done by this development team, particularly sticking with it over time to come up with what's a really, really good outcome. And so for those reasons, I will certainly be voting yes on this proposal.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So I also will be voting to support. I voted to deny the previous two applications. The reason why I've changed for this particular version is notably the conditions, but also the reduction in height. That was always one of my primary concerns, was the, just the sheer scale of the previous iterations and how they were not fitting with the surrounding community. So I appreciate the two-story. I appreciate the increased number of parking. And even though it's not a condition of approval, I do encourage you to build some sort of structure, just to protect the most, one of the most valuable assets people can have, and that's their cars. So thank you.
Mr. Jones, I'll give you a chance, since I've ignored you throughout the evening.
No, you've not ignored me, I appreciate it. I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the dialogue. And I believe that, you know, as actually Mr. Marriott said, that a lot of these projects come with a lot of passion from both the development community and community that will, will live with these decisions for a long time. But I also think that, as we've seen this several times now, I do believe that the developer has checked all the boxes and has created a project that will benefit the community in the long run. I hope that they can fill the, the, the commercial aspect of this mixed use, because I think that the community will use it. I appreciate all the concerns that I've received via email and those that spoke tonight. But again, I think the developer has taken every step forward to address those concerns. So for those reasons, I also will be voting for approval.
Mr. Fifer?
So shockingly, even though I'm probably the most critical up here, because it's actually, you know, my community up there as well, and I've, I, you only get one chance when you do a greenfield development. And trust me, over the last 12 years and May or '24, you can probably count a few mistakes in our years. And, you know, it's a good idea when you're up here showboating it on paper, but when it hits shovel to the dirt, I sometimes cringe driving by some developments we approved. Don't make that be one of those developments. That's all I can say to you, is don't make it be one of those developments. Be proud, try point, you have a good image. And if you want to leave some legacy in this community, this is your chance. And your sub, you better hold them to it doing it at the same time that you expect. I, I too agree that you've come a long ways, you know. We, I didn't know where this was going to go tonight. I do agree that, you know, all my questions that I asked, you only got one X, which, which is still a gateway. I think you need work there. You can't come in front of me and tell me it's a gateway to a Town View community and not do anything with it. Do something with it, make it nice. Just make that X a checkbox, please. Because that community is their main way in and out, and so do something with it. But I, I appreciate the fact that you did do some movement on the needle, maybe not quite as much as I would like. But I do agree that you've done everything to mitigate as much as you can. We, we do want retail in that community. 10,000 square feet is, I could see a lot of boutiques and small shops moving in, and that community will support it. I don't think he needs the apartments up above to make it supportive. My opinion. The fence, hopefully you can overcome that fence, and I appreciate you working with those neighbors over there. And then, the only thing I would do is ask that the team, it should be a question during a motion, but if we could just watch the traffic in that area a little bit more closely after the development, to see if four-way stop or speeding can be addressed in that, in that area. So therefore, because of all that, I will go ahead and support your application.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo the sentiment of my fellow council members and appreciate all the work that you have put into this. And also appreciate the community and all the time that the community has put into this, because this has been a long endeavor. I will say I'm the newest kid up here, and I've only been in two of your hearings, not all three. So, but I, I've, again, appreciated the, the work that you have done that, since I last saw it. And, and I will say that I think, you know, the safety concerns that have been raised are real. And I feel like you have done a lot of your work to address those, and I appreciate that. And with the design that we saw this evening and the pedestrian crossings, I can see that a lot of thought has gone into that, and I really appreciate that. And, and I'm a big supporter of mixed use and, and really developing a community center place that people can gather and feel that it is an integral center part of their community. And so I would echo Councilmember Fifer in that please, 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 really take that to heart when you are designing this, that you do everything you can and, and get the community involved in that, you know, even those small touches mean a lot to how that is, is felt in the community. So I ask you to take the time to do that. And my final thing is, is please consider recycling and for commercial and multifamily, make sure that there is space for all of that, so that everyone can have access to that. Thank you. And I will be supporting it.
I will likewise be supporting. Thank you to the community members, both pro and con, on this. And again, I thank you for your professionalism and your courtesy that you've given to each other in these proceedings. I think all I can say is third time's the charm. And I think you, I think you truly listened to us, but more importantly, I think you listened to your neighbors and in terms of the, the changes that were made over time on this project. So with that, if I can get your vote, Mr. Mormon, recorded. And Mr. Jones, I'm betting, I know how you are going to vote, since you said you were going, unless you've changed your mind, how do you vote?
I have, I have not. It is a yes.
Very good. And therefore, that passes six to zero with Ms. Veray being absent, excused absence. Again, thank you to the citizens, the neighbors, and thank you to, I think, the city team for their work to, to help the developer get through and really answer what city council was asking for in the prior, particularly the most recent application. Obviously, my concern back then was the parking, and I feel very vindicated that by us turning it down that time and approving it this time, that that issue was addressed. Mr. Marah?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready, I'll be happy to make the motion on preliminary plat.
You may proceed.
So I move that a major subdivision, preliminary plat, generally located north of Candela's Parkway and McIntyre Street, bounded by West 93rd Place and Kilmer Way in the city of Arvada, Colorado, with the two conditions that the garages be used for parking and that the developer work with the neighbors to the west on drainage and privacy fencing be approved. This motion's based on the findings of fact and required conditions adopted by the planning commission.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Majority of council votes yes as well. It passes six to zero with Ms. Veray being a justifiably, and most importantly, excused absence. Thank you. Thank you all, everybody on this. We do have another item that we've got tonight. We've got a workshop on update of water and wastewater system development charges. Yes, we can, we'll take a quick five-minute recess. Okay, we are reconvened, and we're going to go into a workshop on the water and wastewater system development charges. Do you want to introduce it? Do you want me to just turn it over to Ms. Israel and let her go? Okay, Ms. Israel.
Right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I was going to start with a joke about a two-hour presentation that I'll be starting. a two-hour presentation that I'll be starting.
That would not be a wise move on your part.
But it's actually, I believe it will be fairly brief, but we're happy, of course, to answer any questions you have. Again, I'm Sharon Israel. I'm the Director of Utilities. Joining me this evening is Jason Mum from FCS Group. He's been helping us as a consultant for developing system development charges. We also have Christine Gray and Jessica Morales. Chris is our Utilities Business Manager and Jessica has been our intrepid Assistant City Attorney in working on this. So huge thanks to the whole team here. Next slide, please, Candace. So in case, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to run through this quickly, but I did want to ground us, just to remind us what we're doing here when we talk about system development charges. So these are charges that we impose on development projects that allow us to have funding so that they can connect to their, to the city's water and wastewater systems. So we pay for things like the North trunk line expansion and the gross reservoir expansion. And sometimes we'll do a betterment on a project that a developer is leading and that betterment adds capacity. There are a lot of really important things to consider. And as we've been going through this process over the last year and a half, you have to consider legal requirements, the valuation of our current assets, our water supply, the amount of money we need as the city to add capacity, and we need a good estimate of how much we're going to grow. And so I'll be introducing Jason here in a couple of slides and he's going to talk with you more about how he's approached modeling our system development charges and providing updates for us, considering all those factors. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, this aligns with the city council's strategic plan. We have a strategic result that by the end of 2023, we will have updated our master plans, which we've done, and also incorporated them into CIP and budget. And as a council may recall, we spent several sessions last year talking about a financial strategy for, for the water, wastewater and stormwater utilities. Next slide, please. Part of that strategy was a roadmap for funding the infrastructure we need. So you can see in the slide, this is actually copied and pasted from a presentation we provided last year where we talked about there's a few different futures that we could consider as we prioritize and consider what our infrastructure needs are. And at the time, we presented a roadmap that provided somewhat aggressive adjustments to rate and service fee revenue. We'll be coming back to you later this year as part of the budget process with a recommendation there. And then also adjusting system development charges. And so when we brought to you last year a recommendation for system development charges, it was the first time since 2017 for water and since 2011 for sewer that we had approached council for that, with that kind of request. And what this does is it, again, enables us to have resources so we can reduce the risk of failure and then also support the planned development at the pace of the market. So next slide, please. You've seen this slide a number of times. We're also managing competing priorities right now. We have got a lot of aging infrastructure in our system that's, and if it's useful life, at the same time, we're really trying to meet the needs of planned development. Next slide. So here's a quick timeline and then I'm going to hand it to Jason for talking through what our current recommendation is. But as a reminder, we started talking about this a couple of years ago, again, as part of our financial strategy, and we hired a consultant to help create a system development charge model. Last October, council adopted the recommendations from that model with an implementation date of July 1st of this year. Unfortunately, earlier this year, the city, we severed our relationship with that consultant, LSA Advisors, over concerns raised about the approach that they used to develop those adopted SDCs. This was a very difficult conversation for us, a very difficult decision, but it was the right one because we've always wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing in establishing these system development charges. So we hired a different consultant, that's FCS Group, and Jason Mum, I introduced earlier, is here today from FCS Group, to help perform additional verification work. So back in June, you'll recall that we had asked council to pass a resolution to give us a few more months to do this additional work and delay the implementation of new system development charges from July 1st to October 1st of this year. So tonight, what we have are, is a recommendation for revision to the adopted system development charges. That would be, we would like to move toward implementing effective October 1st. So based on input tonight, if council sees fit to give us direction to proceed, what we would do is come back next week with a first reading of an ordinance and then a second reading September 11th, along with the public hearing. So, next slide, and I'm going to hand it off to Jason Mum. And again, feel free to ask questions as he's presenting, or we can also answer at the end. Jason?
Hello? Good evening. Sharon said, I'm Jason Mum. I'm the principal with the firm FCS Group. We're located in the Boulder area. And this has been my, I've worked with communities like yours here in the Front Range of Colorado for 27 years, doing fees just like this one. Couple of major things to go over with you tonight, and we won't get into terrific amounts of detail, but I think a couple of things are on the slide here. One of the issues we were asked to resolve for Sharon and her team was whether or not the city needed to continue with its historical process of providing these discounts to those developers who had participated in contributing projects or contributing capital to projects in the past or indeed in the future capital improvements plans that the city had. And typically, in these kinds of fees, we are looking to recover eligible costs that go into an SDC or system development charge calculation. And eligible costs exclude those kinds of contributions from them, very typically. There are some exceptions that fall under a different category of developer financing rather than developer contributions, but that wasn't the case in our analysis here. So as a result of us going through and basically redoing some of these calculations, what we were recommending to Sharon and to her team was that having removed all of these contributions from the, the calculation itself, there's no need to also provide some kind of credit for it in the future. The, the benefit of those contributions has already been removed, and so there's no need to do it twice, in essence. There is, there is one carve-out there and it relates to water supply. So there are some of your development community who have brought their own water to take care of their own communities, and some of them have enough to serve them for a while here. And in those cases, on an exception basis, those developers would not be subject to the water resource component of the fee. And I'll go over that here in just one second. Why don't we go to the next So the basic foundation of an SDC involves a really kind of simple calculation. It's really eligible costs in the numerator and its capacity in the denominator. And what you're looking for there is a, a common unit of capacity. In the case here, we use something called single-family residential equivalents as the capacity. Coming up with those values that go into the equation, there's a sea of numbers involved and it takes a little bit of expertise and some time to kind of sort it all out, which is why we needed the extra time in order to perform this work. But having done that, we've come up with the answers that we see here on these slides. We've broken the water fee up into two components. One of them is the, the water supply component, and it really just takes care of, of the raw water supply and what we call the raw water conveyance infrastructure that's necessary to move that water supply here into the city where it's used, used and useful by everyone here. The major components of that in terms of eligible costs are the value of the water supply portfolio and the cost of that conveyance infrastructure, both the historical components of it, as well as things that might be in the near future that are embodied in the capital improvements plan. That number then gets divided by the amount of capacity that's in the water supply portfolio. That's firm yield of acre feet. And we then translate that into the single-family residential equivalent, which was about 307 gallons per day. And that gets us to a fee of $23,620 per single-family residential equivalent. On the other side of the water fee, we have an infrastructure charge. And the infrastructure charge is dealing with everything from the treatment systems all the way down to the distribution to individual customers. Also, those eligible costs would include things that were built in the past and things that are going to be built in the future. The capacity for this involves some, some thought because what we're trying to do there is figure out what is the total capacity that the system can provide? How much is already being used by the existing customers that are connected to it? And therefore, how much of this system is even available for future customers? The fee itself, but all the fees that you're seeing here are really tailored to those future customers. So out of this whole value of the system, there's a very large portion that ends up being excluded from these fees because it's already being used by the existing customers. And then there's a portion that that's represented in these fees here that would be charged because future customers are going to be using them. So that was $9,870 for the infrastructure fee. There is a parks charge of $1,000 that goes along with these fees, and that brought us to $34,490 for a typical single-family equivalent. That happens to be about $4,100 less than what council had adopted previously. Sewer fee is a very similar calculation. It happens to be much more straightforward than it is for water. We came up with a charge of $6,240 per equivalent unit there. But along with the metro water recovery charge, which is $5,120, the total charge is $11,360. And that also was about $4,100 less than what council had adopted previously. So all in all, we, you know, the work we did came up with a charge that was about almost $8,300 less in total than what had been adopted Let's go to the next one. It's a little comparison of where Arvada sits in terms of these charges compared to some of your neighbors. We've got the proposed, one is, is sort of the reddish-colored one that's towards the center of the chart. And the one that had been previously adopted is out there towards the right side. So it kind of shows you how the reductions factored into the regional comparison that is being shown here.
Are the other numbers for communities, 2023 numbers, or?
I mean, they're, they're the currently adopted fees.
Currently adopted. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next one. So what you're seeing here is the structure for the SDCs that would apply in those, those one-off kind of situations where a developer has already got enough water to provide service for the community and that those water rights are acceptable to the city. In those cases, that developer doesn't need to buy water from the city, buy raw water from the city. They have their own. And in those cases, that water supply component, if you look on that chart, it reads a zero. That would be the exemption here. And that would apply for as long as the city is content that the developer has enough water supply to meet the needs of that community, but only up till that point. So once, in other words, once the capacity that they have has been exhausted and they need to use the city's capacity, then that charge would be reinstated for those kinds of developments. Everything else would stay the same.
Can I interrupt you real quick on, on, on that point? So I understand at this time with, if, if we were to adopt these proposals, that the water developer would bring, would offset the water we would charge them for. Is there anything within the way we would do this, this might be a better question for Sharon or someone else, that, that, that if we adopt different charges, that the, that the water that they bring would still cover the water that they would not buy from us? You know, in other words, that this situation would continue and that we wouldn't find ourselves in a situation where the credit we give them is less than the, the charge we would, we would impose on them?
Guys, I snuck up on you. All right. I think an important point here is that we don't anticipate accepting any more water rights now that the gross reservoir expansion is moving forward. So this is, this schedule of fees is established specifically for those who have already brought water in the past and that we would honor those contributions.
Okay. And maybe I don't understand it very well. Are there developers who are holding water within their portfolio who may want to come do business in town that would bring those with us? Or is, is that not a, not a realistic situation that would happen in the future?
It's, it's not realistic in the context of the current limitations on what water supply is both available to developers and then also desirable for the city of Arvada's water portfolio. But what does exist is previous agreements with Jefferson Center Metro District, where they previously brought a certain number of acre feet to the city, and they're gradually drawing that down with each new development. And so this schedules would be specifically for that district.
Right. Okay. So the situation where a developer might purchase property that has a water right associated with it, maybe an irrigation right or something like that, that they want to convert to domestic use, doesn't have valued us because of where that right may be or what it may be? Is that kind of what you're saying, that we wouldn't be interested in those rights? They'd be better off to negotiate those away in their deal and purchase from us what they need?
Yes, especially with the gross reservoir expansion. The city's in a great position to have enough water supply for build-out once that project's done. We do occasionally get approached by owners of water rights, and we always consider them on a case-by-case basis to see if they would add value. But everything on the market now is really just would be value for irrigation.
Right.
It would be very difficult to find any shares on the market now that could be changed through the water court process and really bring us enough yield to make it worthwhile.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any more questions for Jason on this slide?
I don't have any lights on, so we're all.
All right, well, we can move to.
Our lights are off, but we're still here, honestly.
Well, we've got a next step slide, and then the last one says end, so we're really close, I think. So next steps, we're asking for council this evening, if, if you feel comfortable with the direction in moving forward with an ordinance that we would bring, again, for first reading next week, that would incorporate the, the schedule of fees that you saw, and then additional schedules of fees that are all indexed off of the single-family fees. That full schedule would be part of the ordinance that you'd see. And then we would propose September 11th for second reading and public hearing so we could have an October 1st effective date.
Very good. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I, thanks for letting me ask just a couple more, couple more questions. I want to ask just two, maybe two, maybe three bigger picture questions. So the first one is, is that, you know, when we studied this previously, we had several different options as far as how much we might raise both rates and SDC charges and what that would do to our plan for building out the, the capital improvements that are required, both for development to continue to happen, but also to replace parts of the system. And these revised charges are relatively significantly less, you know, maybe in total between water and sewer 15-ish percent or so. And can you just tell us what the, what the result of that is? Does that just extend the time by which we retire the, the bonds that we've issued? Does this change the timeframe by which we implement capital improvement projects? Because there's got to be some effect on that side. Can you let us know what it might be?
Yes, thank you. We are anticipating lower revenue as a result of this. First of all, from the bond perspective, we are in a great position to continue with the bond payments. So this does not impact our ability to make those bond payments from the bonds that we issued in December of last year.
Okay.
So we're, we're fine as far as cash flow. I don't think Brian Archer's in the room. Oh, yeah, there he is. You want to confirm that? Yes, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Brian, Brian and I also discussed this at length beforehand. I didn't just put him on the spot. So, so from the bond perspective, we're great. As we establish this model, we also know that there are certain future capital improvements that aren't built into it yet. And a big one is the cost of a new water treatment plant. That cost is not built into this model yet. We're not far enough in terms of our capital planning. We still have enough capacity out of our current plant that we're, we can charge off of that. We're anticipating in about the next 18 months to be revisiting what we need to be itself. So we feel like that's a really fair way to handle this. All of the numbers that Jason used are actually from 2022, so we're already kind of looking backward a little bit already. When we come back to you in the next 18 months or so, that we'll have a lot more, we'll have a lot more understanding what our future needs are with that plan. And we'll continue the conversation.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Last thing, this isn't a question, this is just a comment. I attended a housing seminar put on by the HBA last week, and one of the things they were talking about is all the impediments for affordable housing and why housing costs what housing costs. And there are many, many pieces to it, it's a, it's a whole bunch of things stacked together. But one of the suggestions they had was that, that you can't have, you know, housing gets dramatically expensive when the philosophic viewpoint is kind of the one we're taking tonight, where the SD, the system development charges are rather large and the rates are rather small, and that, you know, their, their look at it is, is that if system development charges were lower and rates were higher, so a bigger percentage of the rate went to building the system rather than just operating the system, that it could yield potentially lower-priced housing. And so I just want to throw that out as, as a point of view that I heard. I'm not proposing that we do that, but just to make sure that everybody knows that that's a piece that's within the conversation as we, as we go to these. I think for myself personally, I can see, you know, really both sides of that coin, and not being a professional in this space, you know, I look at these potential options, and I feel very comfortable with the option that we are taking, but just wanted to acknowledge that that point of view is out there and that, that may be something that we keep in mind in the future as we, as we continue to talk about these as it becomes necessary.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I support moving this forward. I think that the analysis tonight puts us in a better place. Frankly, I like seeing us move closer to the center for what are, how we compare to surrounding communities, and did not like seeing us being the second most expensive. So I think that that's, you know, that's good. And to get the reassurance from Mr. Brilliant, Brian Archer, that he's got ways that he can continue to be able to make our bond payments, even though the revenues from this are going to be less, so. Did you wish to...
Would you like me to elaborate on that?
Yeah, sure.
So part of the analysis that was done when we issued the bonds in December was our coverage ratio, and that's based upon not only the system development charges, but also the fees that are charged. And we do an analysis both in wet years and dry years and all the above, and we have a baseline on the level of charges both to an individual and then to the developer. And our coverage on the water side, and I'm going to mess this number up, but it was more than two times what we were required. So we feel very comfortable, even with these changes, to Councilmember Marriott's point of 15%, we'd be looking at 100% before we would be in any kind of danger, so.
Very good.
And it's taken first. So ultimately, if we did run into any issues, it would be on the operational side before it would be on the debt side.
Very good. Okay. I don't see any other comments or questions. So we have a opportunity for, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
We'll continue to watch this, and we'll have our public hearing, and so individuals will have an opportunity to give us their input. This is the time now for anybody who wishes to address City Council under a five-minute limit. Seeing no one jumping to the podium to want to do that, we'll move on to any reports from City Council. Mr. Morin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, I will be having my monthly coffee chat on Friday, August 25th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Sweet Bloom on 77th and Wadsworth, and so invite anyone to come, and we can talk about what's happening in the city.
Very good. Mr. Jones, did you have anything you wanted to enlighten us with?
I do not. I appreciate you asking, however.
Trying not to forget you.
I'm forgettable.
Unforgettable. Ms. Gillis?
Nothing here.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.